Good evening, everyone. I'm John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth. And I call the public work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. And our first item of business is to call the roll. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover? Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
This is a virtual meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. It's been livestreamed this evening. And we're doing this in accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the coronavirus, his executive order number 51, which he signed on March the 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency, which we, the Portsmouth City Council ratified previously. And this is all due to the coronavirus pandemic, which is continuing across the nation, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and here in Portsmouth. This work session of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference today, the 24th day of November, 2020, without a quorum presence in the city council chamber. We're doing this in an effort to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. This is in accordance with City Council ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each member of city council, each council member is participating from their home or some other remote location, and I'm here in the city council chamber. And Madam Clerk, we have 100% attendance, do we not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Our first item is a briefing on the casino. And Mr. Pace?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor of the City Council. Mr. Robert Moore, Economic Development Director, will give you a briefing on the casino post referendum, and Mr. Moore should be available right now.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, good evening. As Mr. Pace stated tonight, I will give you a brief update on where we are, where we've been, and where we're going with regards to the Rivers Casino Portsmouth Project and the Portsmouth Entertainment District. We can go to the next slide. As we get started, let me first thank the citizens of Portsmouth for coming out on November 3rd and showing the overwhelming support for the project by a vote of two to one. I'd also like to thank city council for their commitment and support, the Economic Development Authority for their commitment and diligence, certainly city staff, economic development staff, and the city attorney's office, our liaison, Mr. Mead Spotts, and finally, our legislative delegation led by Senator Louise, L. Louise Lucas. But tonight, just want to let you know that the referendum, while successful, puts us about halfway to completion, and completion being the building of the actual casino. We're running two parallel tracks, if you will. One is the development side, and then one is the administrative side. On the developmental side, if we can go to the next slide. Tonight, you will have or hear the rezoning and closure applications. Those applications were actually filed by planning commission back on the 17th of November. They go for a first reading tonight, and then a second reading on December 8th. Street closure goes for one reading through city council, and that'll be tonight. Along with that zoning, those zoning requirements, there are some additional requirements that will have to be addressed in the near future. Rush Street must obtain from city council approval for the actual overlay district, and that will lay out the uses, the phases, as well as the timing of the development. Rush Street will also have to obtain a use permit from city council, and that's for the construction of the actual casino building. And we anticipate that both of those applications will come in early 2021. Now, from the administrative side, we've still got a couple of things that we have to work on as well. First would be the state licenser, and I always mess that word up, but licensure. Rush Street is anticipating that the application for the license will come out rather soon. I'm awaiting on the state lottery board to put out that application. Once that is out and Rush Street can apply for the license, within two years or 24 months of receiving that license, the casino building should be completed. When we sat and spoke with Rush Street just about a week ago, just a little over a week ago, they are extremely excited about the project, and they've reaffirmed their commitment to the project and their commitment to bettering the community. If we can go to the next slide. Now, when we talk about bettering the community, certainly we all know the investment that they will make in the project, minimum of $300 million, generating tax revenue of about $16.3 million annually, creating 1,200 permanent jobs, 1,400 construction jobs. Now, staff will remain diligent in working with Rush Street to address certain areas of concern. Those areas would be traffic concerns, minority participation, and as well, community engagement. Now, when it comes to the traffic improvements, there certainly will be potential impacts from this project with the, for an impact on the intersection there at Cavalier Boulevard and Victory Boulevard, as well as the impact to the on and off ramps from an interstate standpoint. As part of the rezoning, a VDOT 527 study was conducted. That study actually covers the impact of the casino, hotel, and conference center. When looking at that, the needs associated with the 527 study, we wanted to make sure that Rush Street would in fact complete those improvements as necessary. And such, we have put together through the EDA and Rush Street, a traffic infrastructure agreement. And that agreement makes sure that all the improvements required by the 527 must be constructed as part of the initial phase of the casino development. Now, we anticipate that those costs are right around $5 million as far as infrastructure improvements are concerned. The infrastructure agreement also requires that after council gives approval for the entertainment district, again, the next round of zoning requirements, Rush Street will have to perform a second traffic analysis, but that analysis with VDOT will cover the additional impacts. So everything that will be left as far as the additional eateries, any additional uses that will be associated with the entertainment district. And the traffic improvements per the infrastructure agreement will be constructed by the developer, all of them will be done by Rush Street, without any financial contribution from either the city or the Economic Development Authority. When it comes to minority participation, Rush Street has put out a participation goal of 35% minority contracting. We will work with Rush Street to make sure that they have those names necessary, but as well, individuals that are interested in participating from a contracting standpoint, even a vendor standpoint, can go to the riverscasinoporthsmouth.com website and actually sign up for that information so that they can be contacted and potentially be involved from a contracting standpoint. From a minority investment standpoint, the requirement is either 5% or $5 million, whichever one is greater. Rush Street is currently compiling the list of potential investors, and they're fielding inquiries from individuals who may be interested in investing in the project. The website also has a link there that individuals can sign up to become part of that process. Again, they are doing that process as we speak, and they are hoping to reach that goal of the 5% or $5 million. The community engagement is one that we are really looking forward to. You know, COVID-19 and the pandemic continues to make travel and in-person meetings somewhat of a challenge, but Rush Street has committed to making sure that they are more engaged with the community, and that process will start as they begin to put together, again, the master plan, begin to put together the request for the use permit to actually build the casino. You're going to start to see Rush Street here on a more frequent basis, and make sure that they are, again, are doing what they have a history of doing, which is really being community involved and engaged and giving back where they can. Again, we're excited from a staff standpoint about where we are and where we're moving to. That's a quick but brief update about where we are, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Excuse me, Robert. Deborah just told me that the live feed is down, so the public is not seeing the video portion, but they're hearing the audio, and this announcement's more for the public?
Yes.
And we're working to get the live feed back up?
Okay.
Did I interrupt your conversation?
No, sir. No, sir. I was done. I'm just standing for any questions.
Excuse me, Mayor. I had a question, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm going to open up the floor to questions, and Councilman Glover has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Moore, you had indicated in your last slide on minority participation, and that Rush Street would be working on that aspect of things in terms of putting together potential lists of folks that may be considered for that. At what point, or is there a plan to share that list of potential investors and things like that, or is that protected information that can't be revealed due to whatever concerns they may have?
So, I think it's a little bit of both. I think you're looking at, some of that information will be proprietary, and we will work with Rush Street to make sure they release everything that they can. How much they can exactly release, we don't know at this time, but we are working with them to make sure that council is informed, that the citizens stay informed with who the potential investors will be.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have a comment. Want to remind city council and the public that once Rush Street submits its application for the license, the Virginia Lottery has one year to act on that, so they have to take action by December 31st, 2021. We're all thinking that they'll move quicker than that, and hopefully that license approval will come sometime early or midsummer of next year. The second thing is that the Act, the Casino Act, as it's now referred to, requires that each of the host cities, after the referendum, submit a letter certifying that the pre-designated preferred operator is now the operator. And so that's on our agenda tonight as a resolution. And once we adopt that resolution, we'll submit it to the lottery, Virginia Lottery, and we're well within the 30-day timeframe. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Our next item, Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. At this time, interim chief, police chief, Scott Burke, will give you an update relative to the police department, and he should be on to make his presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. I apologize if my computer would not unmute the microphone. Good evening and welcome, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Pace, and other members of council. Just a brief update tonight on the status of the Portsmouth Police Department and crime in our city. Let me go to the next slide, please. To start off with a summary of our crime report for the calendar year to date, and this data is as of midnight Thursday night, Friday morning, on November the 19th, November the 20th. For calendar year to date, we have had 29 homicides, 86% of them involve firearms, and we have made arrests in 12 of those homicides, which is about 41%. We've had 42 commercial robberies, again, about 71% of them involve firearms, and our street robberies, about 65% of them involve firearms. Property crime continues to be an ongoing issue. Year-to-date, we've had over 200 residential burglaries, just over 60 commercial burglaries. We've had 381 vehicles stolen, and a tremendous amount of shoplifting, at 680 incidents, and an even higher incidence of larcenies from auto. 863 times, our citizens or visitors have had property stolen from their vehicles. What we find very often, especially going into the holiday season, this continues to be a concern, is that the vehicles are often left unlocked with valuables, either in plain sight or readily available. Next slide, please. Shifting just to the quarter, fourth quarter to date, this will be from October 1st up until November the 19th, we've had five homicides. 80% of them involve firearms. We've had 11 commercial robberies, also with 45% involving firearms, and 65, 60% of our street robberies have involved firearms. We continue to see a significant number of larcenies from auto and auto theft. Next slide, please. This is a table that our crime analysis unit puts together on a daily basis so that we're up to date with where we are. These are our violent crimes, homicides, rapes, robberies, and assaults are crimes against persons. I know it's very hard to see on your screen, but in the lower right-hand corner, we have the number of 686. That's the same period from October, January the 1st, this is year-to-date, January the 1st until November the 19th of 2019, we had 686 crimes against persons. This year-to-date, we've had 641. So we are actually down about 7% in our violent crime rate. Next slide, please. This is our property crime data year-to-date. Again, it's also a little difficult to see in the corner. In 2019, for the same time period, we had 4,951 incidents. This year-to-date, we're at 3,904, which is a 21% reduction in property crimes over this time last year, 2019. Overall, combining our violent crimes and our property crimes, we're actually 19% lower than we were last year. It's still too high, we still have goals to achieve, and so we're continuing to move forward. Next slide, please. Just to give you a sample of what some of the officers are doing, and I'll jump over to the right-hand side, quarter-to-date. Citizen calls for service. These are folks calling in to 911 and asking for police services. We average about 187 of those calls every 24-hour period. Most frequently is Thursday, Friday, and then Tuesday, and I included some average response times for you. The dispatch time that's represented on the slide is the amount of time that it takes from when the dispatcher first picks up the call until they ship it to an officer to be assigned. And then, time from the first arriving unit is from the time of the 911 call until the first arriving officer gets on scene. On our priority-one calls, our highest, greatest risk to life or injury, we're averaging right now about an eight-minute and 14-second response time. According to some data that was released by some security companies in early 2019, that puts us ranked sixth and seventh between Austin, Texas and Dallas, Texas. Their average response times, priority-one calls, are seven minutes and eight minutes, Next slide, please. In addition to answering 911 calls for service, your officers are out there on the street every day, self-initiating activity. The greatest thing they do is directed patrols. They'll mark out in a neighborhood, on a block, in front of a particular house, and it's a show of visibility, they're checking for unsecure buildings, anything out of the ordinary. We've really ramped up our foot patrols, and as you see between the two columns, our traffic stops have diminished somewhat from the year to the quarter. We're doing more proactive activity. Next slide, please. Because we continue to recognize that we still have a crime problem in the city, the city deployed a stratified policing model. Initially, it rolled out in May, when we received the results of the research that was conducted in partnership with Radford University. We identified these six focus areas. In August, the department was reshaped and restructured to give us a little more direction and control on how things were being responded. Next slide, please. Over the last several years, you've heard of our police districts. District 1 is generally everything below the interstate, District 2 is north of the interstate, and District 3 is Churchland. Historically, we have had a lieutenant assigned to coordinate the response in those areas. Under the stratified policing model, and on the suggestion and the information we received from research with Radford, we assigned a police captain to each of those districts to better coordinate the efforts. With a captain in place, it's easier to borrow from the traffic unit or from K-9 or community services so that we can focus on these five primary crime categories: homicides and gunshot violence, robberies, aggravated and felonious assaults, burglaries, and motor vehicle theft. Next slide, please. In the first part of November, we made an additional structural change within the police department. About a year, slightly more than a year ago, the property crimes detectives were spun off into a section of special operations. We recognized that they needed to be fully integrated with the other investigators, the other detectives, and so we brought the property crimes back into criminal investigations. It gives us additional detectives that we can run on some of these other cases, it improves communication between property crimes and crimes against persons, and also it gives us a way to develop our junior investigators into more seasoned, and eventually they'll become homicide and sex crimes investigators. At the same time, we also reintegrated our street crimes unit and our gang intelligence unit to support our narcotics and special investigations team. Again, it puts more staffing under the control of the lieutenant over there, it allows street crimes and the narcotics team to focus their activities on priority operations, and it gives us a faster and more responsive method of responding to events that happen either within the city or in a particular neighborhood. Next slide, please. In conjunction with the street crimes unit, we have also pulled together a violent crimes task force. The street crimes unit is focusing on one week from Wednesdays to Saturdays, the violent crime task force is alternating the other week, Wednesdays to Saturdays. That covers our highest frequency for call times, as well as the frequency for when our most violent cases are frequently occurring. So we have the two teams of officers and supervisors, they're doing high-visibility proactive patrols. Crime analysis is studying the data daily and feeding them the information of where the most likely locations for them to be, and so they deploy based on the crime analysis information. We're focusing on people that we know have had problems with law enforcement and the criminal justice system in the past, folks that have outstanding warrants, that are known to be armed, that are known to have committed violence. So we're strategically approaching our crime-fighting efforts with the data instead of just randomly saturating areas. In the last four weeks, the violent crime task force has recovered seven firearms from the streets of the city. Next slide, please. We have recognized that there continues to be some gang activity throughout the city. There are criminal street gangs here, we currently have five of them that are recognized as considered active gangs. The 300 Gang and the 1300 Gang generally work in the Westbury area. 300 was formerly focused in Lincoln Park and Dale Homes, but as the housing environment out there has changed, they've become a little more scattered. The 1300 Gang is generally considered to be the younger boys of 300, so they are associated with each other. We also have an organization known as the 600 Gang. They are primarily focused in the South Side Gardens area of the city, and they first came to our attention in 2015 when they were identified by a school resource officer who was investigating an assault in the school. Most of our gang members, unfortunately, are aged 14 to 21. There are a couple of older organizations, but they are not nearly as violently active as we have seen historically. As a preventive and countermeasures, we're working with our school resource officers. This year, we applied for a grant through the U.S. Attorney's Office and the Project Safe Neighborhoods program. We were awarded some grant funding, and I thank you for appropriating that to us. The alcohol, tobacco, and firearms put on the instructor program, and we ran six officers through the instructor program for the GREAT program, gang resistance, education, and training. This is a program that's targeted towards elementary and middle school students. As we geared up in the summer, we were hoping schools would reopen, so we have been somewhat delayed in delivering that program to our students. Next slide, please. We've also been working very closely with the sheriff. The sheriff has a number of law enforcement certified deputies. We're going to be partnering them up with our law enforcement officers in the police department, and through the additional vehicles, the additional personnel, it will increase visibility on the street. They'll be coresponding with us in more units. When the officer's making arrests or taking a report and then having to necessarily move on to another call, the deputies can remain in the area for a while and maintain that high visibility, so they'll be out there before, during, and after the incidents, working very closely in partnership with us. We're deploying additional bike patrols between the police and the sheriff bike units in the neighborhoods and in the business districts. We are finalizing some technical discussions regarding policy and procedure between the sheriff's department We are finalizing some technical discussions regarding policy and procedure between the sheriff's department and the police department, and then we're looking to roll this out in the first week of December. Next slide, please. Over the past several years, the police department has been confronted both locally and nationally with staffing issues. As you can see here, in January of 2018, we had 217 sworn officers. We are authorized a strength of 259, a number we have not reached in quite some time. By January of 2019, our staffing had grown to 246 officers. And then throughout 2020 has declined somewhat precipitously to where we have only 192 sworn officers today with 67 vacancies. The chart to the right demonstrates our losses and gains: the number of officers hired, the number of officers resigned, and the number retired, and the net change for each of those quarters. And unfortunately, in general, we have a net change that is negative rather than positive. Typically, from a job offer to developing a police recruit into a police officer takes well over a year. So the loss of even one employee, whether they're retiring and moving on to something else in their life or even changing agencies or leaving law enforcement entirely, it takes a long time to get up to replace those personnel. Next slide, please. Working carefully with the city manager's office, the marketing department, and human resources, we've launched a significant recruiting initiative. Six months ago, the city hired a focused public safety recruiter to bring in public safety, police, and fire and paramedic personnel into the civil service system and into our police and fire departments. In October 2020, we put together a significant recruiting initiative: videos, billboards, social media. Next slide, please. We released the initiative on October 27th to national attention. We have 30 and 92nd video clips that were launched on November 13th. And we've pushed out to a number of social media sites, electronic newspapers, and of course, to YouTube. A key component of this initiative is sign-on bonuses, either for officers who join the department and also as a recruitment method for citizens and other police officers. Recognizing that we know our own community and we can recognize the people that are among us that can best represent law enforcement, the initiatives were put into place to reward officers and city employees and citizens for making those referrals. Next slide, please, and I'm available for your questions.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. I opened the floor up for questions, and I see that Councilman Moody has asked to be recognized. Sir, you have the floor, followed by Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for a very detailed presentation. I saw the number of, I think it was 192 officers. I suspect that that number is probably quite a bit lower than that when you factor in vacations, illnesses, and other things. You know, I've had recently numerous citizens refer me to, invited me actually, to Google Virginia's most dangerous city. And it breaks my heart when the name Portsmouth comes up on the top 10 list. And depending on what site you're on, it's either one or two. That's got to change. And no fault of your own, we just don't have enough feet on the street. So my question is, knowing that it takes a year to get a police officer deployable, what's your best guess estimation that we can get back to some semblance of normalcy close to that 259 level? Because until we get there, I don't think I don't think we're going to see a significant drop in that most dangerous category. And that's based on crimes per 100,000 property crimes and violent crimes. So that's my question, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. It is going to be a number of years, unfortunately, before we can gain back anywhere close to 250 officers. We typically are able, currently, we're enrolling five and six recruits at a time in the regional academy. In a couple of years past, we have had academy classes as large as 18 and 20. Even with an academy class of 20 and considering no new additional retirements or resignations, it would take several years to bring all those officers back on board to reach that goal of 259 officers. We have seven recruits in the academy currently. They'll be graduating in late February and going into their field training phase. So they'll be functioning as independent officers probably by midsummer. But that's only seven. Our next academy class will not begin until early March. And those officers, of course, will take almost a year from early March till the following February to complete their training. We are working closely with human resources to recruit as many as we can, but it will take some time to build our staffing backup.
Thank you, Chief. What can we do to help your department as a city, as a city council?
Continue to support and encourage the police department and our partnership with the communities, our civic leagues, and our citizens. That partnership has to go very strongly. Sir Robert Peel, one of the, I guess, the founder of modern policing, made a comment once that the sign of a safe city is not the number of arrests that are made, but it's the number of crimes that occur. So it's not necessarily going out there and locking people up. That's not always the answer. The community itself has to have that partnership and that ownership of taking care of the community and setting standards that this is not going to be tolerated in our city. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons, followed by Vice Mayor Lisa Lukasberg. Elizabeth, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Chief, my first question is a real simple one, and it's just because maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know this, but I always feel like there's never a stupid question. What is a street crime?
Over the years, we have had a tactical response unit. We have had a street crimes unit. We have had a power shift. It's typically a name that is just assigned to street-level interdiction, prostitution, street-level narcotics, the hand-to-hand transactions. While their narcotics unit typically builds cases against the more organized criminal structures, the street crimes also handles some focused traffic enforcement. It's essentially a squad of officers that we can deploy rapidly and on a flexible schedule that's not necessarily bound to the regular shift of days and nights. Because they're in a separate standalone unit, we can put them out, change their schedule, change their work hours. The street crimes, again, it just, it hearkens back to the street-level interdiction. But through the years, it's had a variety of names in Portsmouth.
Okay. So my second question is, I see on your chart that the the numbers of actual incidents of, you know, crimes against persons and property crimes is down year over year. But it seems like the guns are just everywhere. I saw a video in the last 24 hours on Facebook of what looked like a shootout at the OK Corral in one of our apartment complexes. I don't know how old it is, but it seems like everybody's got a gun, and guns are being used with so many more incidents than I ever recall. Is there anything? I feel so helpless in not doing anything. I know guns are an issue, not just in Portsmouth, but is there anything we can do to help you help that?
Again, some of that goes back to establishing the moral compass of the community. I can't say definitively that some of our younger citizens have not developed the conflict resolution skills that some of us have. There tends to be a rapid turn to violent outbursts rather than a more moderated and measured response. We used to go out and roll around in the back lot and push and shove on each other, and it was generally over. We have folks that are turning to firearms as their first course of trying to solve a dispute, whether it's domestic boyfriend-girlfriend, you looked at my sister the wrong way, or whether it's more territorial between some of these street organizations that we have. Going back to the larceny from auto, we've had approximately 20 firearms stolen from unlocked vehicles. Those guns then get out into the community, and we're working diligently to try to recover them, but in a happy place, they would not have been stolen in the first place. They're properly secured.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lisa Lukasberg, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief Burke, thank you for that detailed report. My question, first question, is along the same lines of the 259 person being the ideal operation. Is that number going to fluctuate? We know every 10 years, the census data is taken. How is that number, I mean, are we still on track with that being the accurate number to serve the citizens of Portsmouth? And then second question has to do with the gangs. So we know where they're concentrated, Westbury, Dale's Home, and Southside. Is the civilian task force or the task force that is in place, are those elements helpful in helping us to look at some of this activity?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. In terms of the number of 259 officers, for now, it is a realistic goal. Over the last several administrations within the police department, from Chief Hargis to Chief Chapman and Chief Green, we've had discussions in-house that perhaps the department needs to become a 300 officer department instead of 259 or 260. Council could make that happen with the next budget cycle. You could authorize us 300 officers. But we still have to hire them, train them, and deploy them on the street. So whether it's 259 or 300, it's a goal for us to reach for. The department's number of officers is not necessarily directly tied to any census data. There is some discussion that in an urban area, there's a mathematical equation for the number of officers that you need based on the population, but that's also mitigated by our property boundaries. For example, during the hurricanes, we often refer to the Churchland Police Department as pretty much a standalone unit. When a severe storm comes in, if you're on the other side of those bridges, then whatever you have in Churchland is all you have. Because it's just not safe or practical to move folks back and forth across those bridges in serious storms. So as the census numbers come in, we'll have to evaluate our crime, where the population is in the city. Is it clustered? Is it more spread out? And over time, determine, do we need to raise that number to 300 or even higher? But that's going to be based on what the city needs, not necessarily just some census data. Your second question in relation to the gangs, community involvement is crucial. We feel that we are hampered somewhat now because of the ongoing pandemic, the restrictions that it places on our schools, which in turn impacts the ability of our school resource officers to have that day-in, day-out contact with the students. These programs that we're getting grant funding for are focused towards school education because it's the best place to reach out to a bunch of youth all at once. The community task forces, the community groups, we absolutely need their support. The department can't do it ourselves, certainly not with only 192 officers. We need the eyes. We need the ears of folks that are out on the street. And we need the parents and family members to to stay closely in touch with their children and provide them guidance and opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, and before I ask mine, I'll recognize Councilman Glover. Sir, you have the floor.
Mayor, I think Councilman Clark was up there before me, if you want to recognize him first.
I don't see him. Oh, yes, I do. Councilman Clark, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon. I just have a few questions, and I'll just go by them one at a time so I don't get confused. The first question is, out of that 192 that we have, how many of those are deployable?
170.
Okay, now, just to make a statement on relevance of that, so people understand what that means, there's only 170 that can actually go out and patrol the streets because of whatever reasons they're restricted on their work. So that's a big difference, you know, right there. Second question is, in reference, you know, we've saw the charts and we have 29 homicides. The biggest year that Portsmouth ever had was 1992 with 32 homicides. And as we're vastly approaching that, do we currently have any deaths in the city of Portsmouth that are listed as undetermined?
Can I check on that and get back to you, sir?
Absolutely. And the reason I bring a question just for everybody else, what that is, is they might have a deceased individual, but until the ME determines it a homicide, we might not know that it's a homicide until that documentation comes back to us. So at this point in time, our number potentially could be higher than 29. Next, there was an incident a while back, I guess it didn't make it to the public very much, where a citizen, I guess, was grazed in the shoulder in the Churchland area. Can you give us the details on that? Evidently, it was attempted larceny from vehicles, and I guess she interrupted him, and they fired several rounds at the house. Can you advise us on that specific situation?
I recall the incident. I don't have it right here at my fingertips. But it was a citizen that interrupted a theft, like you said. And the offenders that were stealing from the vehicle fired several rounds.
And that's, and the only reason I bring that up is just to add caution to our citizens when confronting somebody in criminal activity. You know, it's better to call 911 because somebody's breaking in your car and they fire several shots at you just because you yell at them. That's a bad situation to be in. Next question, I was advised this week that there was a hiring freeze for a year because the FBI said we couldn't hire anybody. Can you speak on that?
If I can, I'll jump back for a moment to your undetermined deaths.
Okay.
And then I'll come back to that.
Sure.
We, we did have, in fact, one case from earlier this year that was carried as a death investigation for several months. And when the ME's report came back, it was determined that the, the infant died from head trauma and it was not an accident. So that's the type of case that may get reclassified, and this one did. It was reclassified from a, a death investigation to a homicide.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding, regarding the hiring freeze, if we go back to the, to the diagrams that we're showing our hirings and our separations, shortly, I guess mid 2019, there was a sudden change in, in hiring. And you can see there that in the first quarter of 2019, we brought in five new police officers. Then in the second quarter, we hired 14. And then immediately, a very precipitous drop as we entered the third and fourth quarters of 2019 and carried on into 2020. I was not party to all of the conversations within human resources. There were some outside factors that impacted how often we were able to test and the number of people we could bring on board. And so it dramatically impacted our hiring.
And, and thank you for that. And the reason I bring it up is I know you were not directly involved in that, but that is something we've been struggling to fill these positions, and if we weren't allowed to hire, that is something that counsel was never advised of by our management team. So we were never made aware that the police department was not able to fill positions. We were always told that they were working on it, working on it. But now evidently some things are coming to light that we were kept in the dark on. And the last, uh, next thing I'm bringing up is, is, uh, the video that Councilwoman Simmons alluded to earlier. I would assume everybody has seen it by now. It's a gun blazing shootout with approximately five to six individuals. It appears to be in the 900 block of Lincoln Street, based on my recollection of what that looks like. And just so everybody know, it has made the five o'clock news today on Wavy showing that same video with the shootout. And these are the, you know, it's, it's countless shots are fired indiscriminately in various directions. And unfortunately, a lot of times these rounds do not find their intended victims. The bullets don't have names on them. But this, this video will enlighten people as to what goes on in a daily basis in this city that, you know, people hear shots fired, but they don't understand that this is what's really happening. So the last question I have, has there been any other discussions to bring in the state police back? Because they were extremely successful when I worked with them in 92. They were extremely successful the last time when they were here most recently in assisting us getting guns off of the street. So has there been any conversation about collaborating with them and bringing them back to work with some of these violent issues?
The state police task force was with us in late February, early March, just before the COVID restrictions impacted a great deal of us. We are maintaining contact with the state police Division Five and the folks that, that run that squad. That's a group of troopers that moves around the state. They focus enforcement efforts in a number of cities and towns. There are travel restrictions in place currently, but we are maintaining our contacts with the state police and we look forward to having them back. That was a very effective and productive deployment the last time that they were here.
That's all I have. Thank you, Chief.
I'm sorry, we're hoping to achieve similar results by our partnership with the sheriff.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Shannon Glover. And then Councilwoman Lisbon Simmons has asked for the floor again. Shannon, you've got the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Chief. And I want to say on behalf of my colleagues, we appreciate the job that you and your force do each and every day to keep our citizens safe. It's not easy under the conditions that you're working under, but, but we acknowledge that you all do the best that you can, and we absolutely support that. But my question is, I saw where you indicated the sheriff is now involved. You guys are collaborating, and I think that's a good thing. I was hoping to Councilman Clark's question that we were getting more folks involved like the state police so that we can have adequate people on the street because a lot of our citizens are, are afraid right now. And I've gotten numerous calls as well as some of my colleagues and numerous photographs of, of young people and gangs and guns. And we know that's not a good prescription. I guess my question to just say it, you know, clearly is, short-term, midterm, long-term, you guys are doing the things that are necessary. I'm sure you don't have a timetable when this can be turned around. But how do, I, I know you talked about, you know, what we need to do as a community and, but, but how do we really begin to get a better handle on this so that we can ensure our citizens that we're on top of things?
With the, the Violent Crime Task Force that we assembled that's working, those are officers that are in other regular assignments. It includes some of our administrative personnel, property and evidence. Oh, excuse me. Folks in the administrative bureau that it's something we've looked at for a number of years that, where we have police officers driving a desk. Best place for a police officer is on the street. And we're looking, have been looking for years to civilianize some of these additional positions. One, it makes a career path for some of our non-sworn employees, but it also puts officers back out on the street. What we're doing with this Violent Crime Task Force and another project we're going to be kicking off next week in partnership with the sheriff is we're mandating that some of our personnel who typically have nine-ish to five-ish office jobs, they're going to have to get out on the street. We're going to put the additional personnel out on the street to address these crimes and this sense of security faced by the community.
Good. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Simmons, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to the sheriff, the LE certified deputies as well. I think that's a marvelous program. I think it's a great idea. I, I do realize that, you know, even a police officer on every corner is never going to stop everything and we're never going to be able to deal with particularly the domestic and family incidents, which are entirely too high as well. But the, the mere presence of a sheriff's car, a deputy that is LE certified to work with our officers, I think is not only good for the safety of the citizens, but good for the safety of our officers. And so I think that's a wonderful program and I'm, I'm glad to hear that you all are going to finally be able to put that into effect. That's wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions? Mr. Pace, right before the meeting, this relates to a question that's already been asked. You told me that you had just learned about a year-long hiring freeze. And that's been discussed, but I'm a little confused. Was that a hiring freeze imposed by our HR department or some external agency? Could you elaborate? Do you have any facts on this? Or let me restate that. Do you have any information on this?
Mr. Mayor, is that question to me?
Either you or Lavorce, Pace, whoever can answer the question.
Okay. I would have to go back through some of my previous correspondence electronically and see what records, if any, I may have. In, I guess, the second quarter of 2019, in conversations with the human resources director at that time, hiring slowed down. And as to the specific purpose or the specific cause behind that, it was not directed by a federal agency to the best of my knowledge. There, there may have been other factors in play, but I believe there was a reference a minute ago to the FBI. The FBI in no way shut down our hiring process. We had an internal analysis that was also tied to our promotion process because there were questions about the fairness and the equity within our promotion process. But I believe our hiring process was also somehow affected by that, by that detailed scrutiny. Again, I don't have documents at my fingertips that I can, I can support that with.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything, Mr. Pace, to add?
No, he, he answered the question.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Battle. Councilman Battle, you have the floor.
You must not be able to see my hand.
I, I did not. I apologize.
I mean, you must not.
There you are.
I swear. But anyway, Chief, what is the figure in the top left-hand corner on the third and fourth documents that you showed? I think one was 59,000 something. And the next slide said 52,000 something. What are those figures?
That was slide number six. And slide number seven. The, the first number, the 59,823, that is the number from calendar year January 1st until October the 20th, November the 20th. That's 59,823 calls from the public, calls to 911 for police services. The second number, which was 52,0084, that is the number from January the 1st until November the 20th of officer, officer-initiated activity. So to look at those averages, we're averaging 184 calls every 24 hours from the public. And we're still getting out there and producing 160 calls every 24 hours of officer proactive activity. The direct patrols, the foot patrol, bike patrols, identifying suspicious vehicle or suspicious citizen. And those are officer-initiated calls instead of 911.
Thank you.
Nate, have you asked for the floor?
Yes, sir. Again, yeah, I just, I will, I would like some clarification here because something's not adding up. I asked a question about the hiring freeze for a year. The first answer was, the chief told us that he wasn't privy to some of those conversations and didn't know. I was told by an interim city manager this week that it was a hiring freeze because of the FBI. This goes back to all the time that we were told there was no FBI investigation. And then the city had hired an attorney to deal with the FBI investigation that we were told that was not occurring. So I would like to finally get down to the bottom of this and find out what the truth is because apparently there was some type of investigation that we were not privy to. And the answers tonight are not adding up. So I really want to know what, what, what is the truth? And, and what's going on with that? Because we're, we're getting brushed onto the side in 20 different directions. And, and somebody, this is not adding up to the truth. So somebody needs to go ahead and advise us of what, what really happened and, and what got us to this point because it, people are beating around the bush and, and I just don't think everybody's giving us the 100% facts. So that's something we need to find out.
Uh, Mr. Pace, can you and the chief research this and bring it back at the next meeting? It, it appears to me that you all are going to have to do some digging. Councilman Moody, you've asked for the floor.
Yes, Councilman Clark just reminded me of the, of the attorney that this council actually wasn't aware that was hired for any investigation. And consequently, we made a decision that we had no use for her as far as her employment. Then, then we found out later that she's still employed. So I think, I think our interim city attorney should offer an explanation. Understand he's not here tonight. But I think this council needs to know, as Councilman Clark said, what in the heck are the facts? We, we're hearing a lot of stuff, a lot of minutia floating around. But we, we need to be grounded in the facts because we're getting asked questions that we don't have the answers to.
Mr. Moody, I am here this evening.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Can you answer that question?
I, I was not in a position to answer that question when, you know, there was another attorney, head city attorney at the time. I think though that the person you're referring to had nothing to do with any FBI investigation. That was a personnel matter. She was hired to help us on a personnel matter as well as FOIA requests we were getting. As far as FBI investigation, I would have to check into that and get back with you on that. I was not in.
I think, I think this council needs to see the, the agreement that we entered into with that attorney.
Well, I, I think you're talking about probably two separate attorneys.
I'm talk, I'm talking about the attorney, Ms. Hudson.
Okay, and, and I don't think Ms. Hudson had anything to do with an FBI investigation.
I don't care what, I don't care. She washed dishes part-time at, at a restaurant. I want to see the agreement.
I understand. You had specifically asked a question about the attorney that was involved in FBI investigation, and I was answering that question. I will look into it and be back in touch at the next city council meeting as far as your, your question is and your request.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. We're ready to move on. Mr. Pace, do you have any other items?
Mayor, I don't have any other items. I would like to comment relative to what we just talked about with regard to a human resource management. I did have that conversation with Mr. Clark.
Uh, you went off the, yeah, start again.
Okay. Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know if there was, if it's a matter of semantics or what it was with regard to what had happened. But I was told that there was a hiring freeze for one year with the police department. And I was concerned about that because, one, I didn't know whether counsel knew. I didn't know if there was.
Uh, you, you went mute again.
Okay. I don't know if someone said that there was an FBI investigation or an FBI inquiry relative to looking at the hiring practices for the police department. That's what I shared with Mr. Glover. At that time, I thought they were saying that it was an FBI investigation. However, I'm learning recently that maybe it was not investigation. It could have been an, an inquiry. Or however they figure out, how they determine what they determine. But I'm sure that it was said that there was a hiring freeze for about one year, and that was told to them by the then Human Resource Management Director. And so I wanted that to be conveyed because here again, us dealing with everything that we're dealing with in terms of vacancies in the department, you all as elected leadership need to know why that happens. And it's not because we've not been doing our due diligence in terms of recruiting people for the department. What, that's one of the reasons why I came up with the idea to do the major recruitment campaign and provide incentives. Because here again, I did not want that to seem as though we weren't doing our due diligence. But I did understand there was a situation whereby it was told to the police department that they could no longer hire because their hiring practice is being investigated. And I don't have any documentation. I was not in those meetings, and at that time, I was not privy to that conversation. But I did want you all to know where that came from.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other items on your list, Mr. Pace?
No, we don't have enough items this evening.
Okay. We do have a need for a closed session. And Madam Clerk, do you have the motion for that closed session?
Yes, sir.
Will you read the motion and then I'll ask a member of council if they're ready to make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. There's a move to go into closed electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsections 2.2 dash 3708 point 2, A point 3 and 2.2 dash 3711 A1 and City Ord- City Council Ordinance 2020 dash 102 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Thank you, sir. A member of council that will make that motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called. Uh, if you're opposed, nay. And Madam, uh, Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. We are now in closed session and we'll take a...